It's got 20 seconds left. And I'm going to use all 20 of it.
Is that naked?
Yeah.
Dead.
Max? Good.
Boy, that looks like Mike Duval.
All right, we'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting of the City of Brainerd. And roll call first.
Gorham.
Here.
Grisula. Norwood.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
And Duval.
We haven't signed him in yet.
Yep.
I don't count you.
And... Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the record which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and then on to item four. For the agenda, I am looking for an amendment to the agenda for two things. One is an oath of office immediately after the approval of the agenda amended, and then also moving the public hearing up to after the minutes.
Move to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, and on to the oath of office.
If you could please stand, Mr. Duval, raise your right hand. Please repeat after me, aye, state your name.
Aye, Mike Duval.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Planning Commission.
The duties of the Office of Planning Commission.
Of the City of Brainerd, Minnesota.
Of the City of Brainerd, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. And now the record can reflect that Mr. Duval is here in presence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on to approval of the minutes.
Move to approve. I'll second.
All right. And all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, same sign?
And abstain.
And motion carries. On to public forum. I'll open the public forum at 6:02. If anyone would like to come forward to speak at the public forum for items that are not currently on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. And time limits may be imposed. Anybody looking to speak to any item that is not currently on the agenda? And it doesn't look like we have anybody online, okay? And one last time of a call for anybody wanting to speak at the public forum, and I'll close the public forum. And on to unfinished business. And I'll hand it off to Director Kramvik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is the public hearing as well as review of the signed ordinance. Planning Commission has discussed this ordinance in great length in the, for the past few months here. And the summary of proposed changes include: Change sign regulations during election years to reflect state statute. Prohibit banner signs except on a temporary basis of 60 days per calendar year. Allow signs to encroach MINDOT right-of-way with MINDOT approval. Require the removal of signs that are in disrepair or are no longer associated with a vacated business. Allow larger pylon signs in the general industrial district for larger properties. Requires design elements for wall canopy and marquee signs. And finally, allow for more than one monument sign for drive-through businesses. So with that, staff recommends to hold a public hearing for the proposed sign ordinance and recommend approval as presented. And I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff from the Commission? All right, seeing no questions at this time, I'll open the public forum for, or sorry, the public hearing for the signed ordinance, proposed sign ordinance, amending Chapter 515 at 6:04. And if anybody would like to come and speak at the public forum for signed ordinance, Section 515. And I'll ask a second time for anyone wanting to speak at the public hearing, for signed ordinance, amending Section 515. And one last time, call for anyone wanting to speak at the public hearing. And I'll, still nobody online, I'm guessing. And I'll close the public hearing at 6:05. And bring it back to the discussion at the Commission table first. Any discussion items? And has everybody had a chance to kind of review? All right, any willing to entertain any motion?
Late to the question, but I did have a comment I wanted to make on, I believe it's number 18, page nine, about the real estate signs. And, Mr. Chair, this is a question probably for James. When we say a real estate sign is limited to, and he gives the parameters there, are we moving beyond size, number, and location with this by specifically calling out real estate sign? Are we moving into the territory of, I guess, the content of the signs? Because we don't have signs that say for restaurants, for food service have to have this, for this they have to have that. Here, we're specifically saying for real estate, limited to this. So I guess respond to that or other members?
So this was taken directly from another municipality's code to allow signs of a larger size. It's typical that real estate signs are larger. You know, certainly, we have heard in the past that, you know, you can't limit content to such nature. This was essentially a way to rectify what you see typically for commercial real estate or, you know, real estate signs in residential areas. So staff is recommending that change because it is pretty consistent with what we see out here.
Okay, thank you. I just, and part of the reason I bring it up too is that we all see the, you know, whether it's, I guess we'll say Close Commerce or RE/MAX or some of these other commercial real estate signs. And I don't know, I guess I'd hate to have them switch out all their signs just to comply with this. Or I don't know if there's something, you know, so...
So it could perhaps allow you something even larger. Again, this was taken from another municipality's code. Typically, I know you asked a question about content. A lot of that relates to non-commercial signage. So I don't think there'd be an issue from that perspective because I would consider certainly a real estate sign being a commercial-type sign. But, you know, right now, we don't have any regulations for it. So essentially, they would only be allowed to have a six-square-foot sign in our current code. You know, that certainly hasn't been enforced. This is a way to put some type of parameters on it.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Any further questions? Otherwise, looking for a motion?
Chair, I can make a motion to accept the signed ordinance as presented.
Motion by Gorham. Looking for a second?
Second, Duval.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? And motion carries. And then do we need to go over next steps? I'm sure...
I'll just mention next step. So this will be, the City Council at their next meeting on October 6th will be conducting the first reading of this ordinance.
All right. And then on to the consideration for preliminary plat for plan unit development of Parcels 41020691 and 682. I'll turn it over to Director Kramvik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Keepers has submitted applications for a preliminary plat, a plan unit development, and a rezoning for a proposed 190-unit apartment complex slash development. The properties are currently zoned RL1, Rural Living 1, and the applicant is requesting a rezoning to a PUD overlay district with an underlying CN2 zoning designation. The primary purpose of the PUD overlay district request is to allow for a mix of residential and commercial uses. Prior to a final decision by City Council, the council is required to complete an environmental assessment worksheet for this development as it's over 150 units. The developer has also hired an engineering firm to conduct a traffic study, which will be available before final approval. Staff have no concerns at this time. MINDOT did send a letter with some suggestions and requests to the Planning Commission as well as the city. One of those is that the complex be placed, or the entrance road placed 500 feet from Business 371. The development meets this requirement or is very close as measured by staff on GIS. In addition, the city engineer is currently working with an engineering firm on a sewer study for South Brainerd and specifically for this area. The study will indicate how the system must be designed to handle that increased flow. The proposed project is consistent with the comprehensive plan's Housing Goal 1, provide a diverse mix of housing choices for all stages of life, income ranges, and ownership slash rental preferences. The surrounding developments are comprised of residential properties, a senior living facility, a recovery facility, and commercial properties along Business 371. Residential along Greenwood is kind of a mix of single-family residential as well as some multifamily apartment units. So this use is consistent with the surrounding uses. The wetland to the north will provide a buffer between this property and the low-to-medium-density Woodland Hills development, so it will minimize visual impacts to the surrounding properties. The applicant did provide, I believe within the civil plans, a plan that indicates where that vegetation is going to remain. Certainly, in a wetland area, that's not an area that will be able to be developed into the future. The proposed design allows for future expansion of both residential and commercial uses, and the developer plans to subdivide Outlet A potentially in the future for commercial uses along Business 371 and possibly residential uses to the west. The proposed building has a variety of elements to create visual interest such as alternating wall patterns, color changes, stonework, and balconies to meet the building and design standards of the zoning code. The fire department has reviewed the site plan and has no concerns at this time. A city engineer has not fully reviewed the stormwater calculations, but after reviewing the site plan, the stormwater site plan also has no concerns at this time. Between the Ostry parking spaces and garage spaces, the parking is adequate for the complex. The complex does not exceed the parking lot maximum, which was recently inserted into our zoning code. A landscape plan has been designed to enhance the structures and parking facilities of the proposed development. And with that, staff recommend approval of the following request: rezoning from RL1 to PUD overlay district, a preliminary plat, as well as the PUD development stage plan. And I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do we have, James, do we have any estimate of what the sewer and the infrastruc, the sewer and water and infrastructure, what it's going to cost and who's going, and I assume it's going to be paid for by the city? Is there any estimate?
So those are worked out as a final development agreement at this time. We have had discussions, certainly if there's things that need to be added. We believe a lift station most likely have to be added. Possibly some type of loaf, a storage area to release flow during off-peak times. So it's kind of, going to be kind of dependent on how much those structures cost, but the developer has indicated that they'd be paying for a lot of that infrastructure. Certainly, there's significant SAC and WAC income that will be coming, or fees will be coming into the city as part of this project. And sewer and water accessibility charges could be potentially used for expansion of services. That's what they're really there for. So, you know, at this time, it's something that we're still working on with the developer. Certainly, it's not going to be all on the city to put this infrastructure in.
So we don't know what it's going to cost?
We don't know the...
That's my question, thanks.
Any other questions of staff?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Well, I mean, with the follow-up with that, I mean, when is that? Is it, is that decided before you go ahead with this project or...
So this is only the development stage plan, this isn't the final plan. So City Council cannot do any approvals until the EAW is complete. Certainly, the city will have the sewer study complete as well before making any final determinations on this. So this is essentially kind of a preliminary approval on it, but not a final approval.
Yes.
Question for James. You may have said, when do we anticipate the sewer study findings, results back?
So, we believe that sometime mid to late September, we'd, here's some preliminary feedback from the study, some of the preliminary calculations being complete. Certainly, the full sewer study for this area would be anticipating being complete sometime in October. So certainly, we would know that information before making any final decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Follow-up question, another one for James. So in terms of, I'm just kind of following up on just emails that we had this week with the city engineer, that it's right that there are no city plans to develop Greenwood right now? There's no current plan to make Greenwood any bigger or add any pedestrian features?
As of right now, there's no plans to add any pedestrian features to Greenwood Street as this is a pretty underdeveloped area. But, you know, perhaps if this project does go forward, it's not too far away from the bike trail up at Buffalo Hills Lane. So, you know, certainly, a recommendation could be made to the city or to the engineering department that this area should be looked at for future planning on pedestrian travel.
Just the last question would be, if we get a bill on this or a cost on this, would it be on the city or would it be on the developer to pay for the improvements on the road?
So typically, you'll see the Voyager Lane here. Developer would be required as part of the road construction to put one sidewalk on the side of it. So you see on the south of Voyager Lane there. That'd be on the developer to put that sidewalk in. But certainly, what would be typical is when the city is planning to do a reconstruction project on Greenwood Street, that reconstruction would be done. Certainly, those potential costs for that would be assessed somewhat to, you know, the adjacent property owners when a street reconstruction project does happen. But typically, you wouldn't require something at this time.
So there would be a bill paid by the city to improve Greenwood Street?
To improve Greenwood Street, yeah, potentially in the future.
It would be on the taxpayers too, thank you.
Mr. Chair? Yes.
When was Greenwood last improved? I know, because we realigned that intersection to get rid of that acute intersection, to kind of square that up. Both right and left turn lanes were added. Do you remember, can you, I'm putting you on the spot, but do you know roughly when that was?
So I could get some clarification from a city engineer and email that information out, and we can get that information, you know, prior to any final approvals. I do know within the last few years here, I believe that area had been resurfaced. We didn't do a complete reconstruction project on it. Sewer hasn't been added. Certainly, something like that would have been premature without knowing if this property is going to be developed or not.
Yeah, thank you. It was just a matter of years ago that those improvements were made.
Excuse me, Chair, one more question. What is, I know the road on the, on the south part of Greenwood is fairly narrow. Is that like a 30-foot? Is that what that is? It's, I know it's very narrow, and then it gets a little bit wider as you move to the north on Greenwood. So maybe guessing 30-feet? Seems awfully small.
I don't have an exact, you know, measurement offhand on the width of it, but yeah, it does, the width does shorten as it gets further to the south there.
Okay.
So again...
It's shorter by the highway and then it gets bigger by the, when you move north.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, any last questions of staff? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing for the plan unit development and conditional use, or sorry, rezoning. Usually, we ask that the applicant come forward at the beginning and kind of give a brief synopsis of the application and the project. Some questions might be fielded from the Commission table at that time. And then any other individuals will be able to speak after that. And so I'll open the public hearing at 6:19. And if the applicant would like to approach in just a name and affiliation or mailing address.
Good evening. Mike Patrick, I am the CFO at Keepers Construction. So I'm here tonight representing the company. We're, we've been in business for over 50 years. We focus now on multifamily housing and excited to do this project in Brainerd. We've done some in Baxter. And we did one in Brainerd a long time ago. But as you see, the five buildings, we'd break that down into two phases. Phase one would be three buildings, phase two would be two buildings. It's market rate housing. We feel Brainerd could use that, and, you know, there's a lack of housing in the area. So that's why we're eager to move forward with this project and partner with the city.
Any questions of the applicant from the Commission table?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a few questions. 190 units, how many people is that estimated to be? 190 units, are we talking 380 people, 500 people? What's a guess?
Good, good question. The units are made of a studio, one-bedroom, two-bedrooms. The studios are, you know, the smaller, so that's typically one person. A one-bedroom, again, it could be one person, two people, so...
We don't know.
I can't give you an exact number.
Just kind of hoping for a number there. Another question I have, sir, is, is there going to be a playground offered on the, on the, on the part of the development? Will there be a playground for kids?
Yes, we usually do provide that as one of the amenities.
That will be there, very good. I think my last question right now would be, is there any tax increment financing involved in this? Or is it all privately funded?
Private.
Thank you.
And then I did, out of curiosity, do you recall the last time that Keepers ended up building inside Brainerd?
We built out on Highway 18 and 25, right on the corner. It was a 28-unit building, and I believe
Okay. And at the time, was that still inside the city limits of Brainerd?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if anyone else would like to come before the Planning Commission to speak at the public hearing, we just asked that you would state your name and address for the record. And usually, we try to keep it at three minutes.
Hi, I'm Nancy Schmitz. I'm here representing my son and daughter-in-law who live on Greenwood. And she wrote a little note, she's working her second job, so she's unable to be here. And I'm not used to doing this, so I'm a little nervous, I'm sorry. She said, "While I understand that creating housing is important to the overall economic growth of the community, I am concerned with what adding a dense population will do to the existing quiet, peaceful, family-friendly neighborhood I currently enjoy living in. I was told you probably won't even see them, which I find hard to believe with the entry ports being on the residential streets of Greenwood and Woodland, adding a minimum of 200 additional vehicles. This can cause traffic issues, strain infrastructure, making it not safe for you to walk your children paths to the park that is blocks away or from where they plan to build. This will create pollution, both environmental and noise. This could also strain the infrastructure such as roads, water, sewer, which if they can't handle the dense population being added, can only cost costly repairs. Then there is wildlife displacement, which can be costly damage to the existing home and costing thousands of dollars to which homeowners' policies do not cover. Increased crime rates when adding such dense populations are to be expected. This can strain the emergency services and take longer for police, medical, fire to respond to the emergency calls. I always assumed the property would be built on eventually, however, I could not have imagined what is being discussed today. I implore you to think about the existing families that live in the area and not to push this because, not just to push this because the city council has bent on you to create more housing. There are gentler approaches to do so." They found their dream home up here, they moved up here, and they want to plan on, they plan on starting a family up here. And I can personally attest to sitting on their deck, maybe seeing 20 cars go by in a day. I've seen the deer, I've heard of the bear, I haven't seen the bear, the rabbits. And if you drive down Woodland, you can see the multitude of deer. So we also have kids riding bikes, so whoever asked about the sidewalk. Families pushing strollers, and seniors are walking from their little place over there. So 20 cars versus minimally 200 or more is a whole lot of cars. And they have a quiet, peaceful rural situation right now. So 190 is pretty dense. I know they have a lot of land, but that's a lot more infrastructure, a lot more cars going down that tiny little street. And I would encourage you to drive down there if you haven't seen it because it is a quaint, beautiful little neighborhood.
And just the name and the address that you were representing again?
Amber Teal White, 2536 Greenwood.
All right, thank you.
So they totally back right up to it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak at the Plan Unit Development and Zoning Change Public Hearing? And anyone online? No? And one last call for anyone that would like to speak? All right, and we'll close the public hearing at 6:25 and bring it back to the Commission table. Any discussion at the Commission table?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Looking at the plan, I think it's a pretty exciting plan. I think it's going to do a lot to move Brainerd forward here in meeting some of the housing demands. This is not going to be affordable housing. This is going to be market rate if I understand correctly. But still, addressing a need for, probably in this case, downsizing housing and freeing up other housing that would be affordable and meet the goals of the county's 2020 housing study. There is a traffic study that will be done that will help us understand the concerns I heard by the person that testified here. Give a better understanding of what additional cars are going to be on Greenwood Street and how that'll affect also entry onto 371. So there's stuff pending that would be addressed later. Am I correct, Mr. Kramvik?
Yes, we are currently working on a traffic study.
Right, so we will have better information to make further decisions down the Rhine on this, on this proposal here. Right now, looking at a development plan, a preliminary plan of sorts here for the PUD. The other thing I think is to the issue of you know, seeing the development from existing, I'm encouraged by the existing tree buffers that are proposed to be left in place. I'm particularly encouraged by the photometric plan that shows respectful lighting really contained on the site. So you're not going to have light shooting through the trees and those sorts of things. So that, that lighting plan is plat, E3.5, I think, 3.5, and that's quite a ways down the book, yeah. So you're seeing here that the light is not spilling out of the project and off of the property itself. So I'm, I'm really encouraged by that. And their plans are already speaking to meeting the standard for lighting as well. So we're not going to have lots of bright lights flying out. So I'm, I'm, as we look at this further in the future, I'm hoping that it'll be more evident. And if the applicant can demonstrate more clearly in their, in their proposal, how the traffic and how that private feel for the existing neighborhood, I think that would be beneficial as you move forward in the next steps here. So those are my comments, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion items?
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
One of the things that, I don't know if anybody can answer or whatever, but maybe we can, if somebody knows, somebody from MINDOT here. But with this amount of unit, and Greenwood is a quieter street. I go down it quite often, we have an apartment down there. Why can't it go on to 371? Because there's definitely going to be traffic go on Greenwood to cut across. And that would eliminate that. And you just have the bike path or whatever that cuts over to that side. It's just, just a comment. I like the plan, I like the detail, I think it can work the way it is without any issues. But that's one thing that's, I don't know.
I might defer to Commissioner Harensen.
I know, that's why I was looking that way.
I know, you said it was just a comment, but, Mr. Chair, if I could respond to the comment. And actually, I'll just reiterate what was in the letter. So the letter went to MINDOT, and we have a Development Review Committee that reviewed it. And what was referenced in the letter is with the, you know, access management trying to, you know, there's spacing guidelines and access management guidelines that MINDOT has. And so with this... and access management guidelines that MINDOT has and so with this, with Greenwood being where it is, the improvements that were made to Greenwood, the spacing would, would push it beyond the limits of this project for another access. And then, of course, the comment going back to where they do have it is approximately 500 feet from, from the other entrance. But as far as another access or a different access onto Green, onto 371, it would be too close to Greenwood, the existing access.
Throw around about, we got them everywhere.
Commissioner Corrigan?
I would agree with their, their comments that 190 units is exciting to get 190 units here. And I, I think though, as presented right now, it's simply not supported by the comprehensive plan, specifically the land use goal one, where we talk about mixed use, we talk about trying to integrate land uses, and specifically, we talk about deploying smart growth principles. And that's the idea there being create bikeable, walkable areas, strengthen and direct development towards existing communities, not out all by themselves, to make cost-effective decisions. Right now, we don't know if this is a cost-effective decision at all, and also encourage collaboration with community and stakeholders. So I hope moving forward, that is honored. And because I think the smart growth principles are, are very important and they're definitely part of our comp plan that we're operating under right now. So those are my comments.
Thank you. I'll look to my left. I do have a question or a discussion, comment, item with that housing study that the county did. I have a number that's rolling around in my head that I recall, but I'm not 100% certain of my number. And so I'll first look at staff. Do you remember that housing study and the shortfall that we were looking at?
So I would probably defer to Mr. Duvall on that as part of the HRA board.
It would be in the neighborhood of 4,600 that were identified in 2019 when the study was put together. For the county, and you can say that population-wise, Brainerd being about a third, that would probably put us about, you know, 1,600, 1,800 housing units and we've not made much progress on that in the interim.
The number that I had rolling around between Brainerd-Baxter was 35, 36. And so roughly assuming the necessity as to fulfill that, that's roughly 300 per year for the next 10 years in order to, to start.
Plus our lag.
Yeah, plus the lag. And so this is a project that is attempting to make a fairly decent, and I do agree that smart development is, we have difference of opinion, but any other comments from any other commissioners? Yes?
Well, Mr. Gorman, you stated that this is kind of out there. Where, Brainerd doesn't have that many places to build.
The Gustafson property that, of course, went a different direction would have been a perfect location for it, the Gustafson property, that being behind Ace Hardware, north of Ace Hardware, that would have been a perfect location. That's a good example of, I think, of infill, because this is the opposite of infill.
Yeah, that's one, but different, I mean, I own properties and rentals, quite a few too. I would never look at that personally.
Okay.
I mean, so you're looking at a developer that's trying to do something and add and they're, they're doing market rate. Honestly, market rate in Brainerd is the same as affordable housing, their guidelines, there's really no difference. And that's why we never go that route to do into the, any of the programs. They just, they don't make any difference, to be honest with you. So to me, if they're going to do, could they do 190 units at this Gustafson, Gustafson property?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
Certainly more units than we have currently there.
Do we have anyone that's interested in that?
No, you know, Dave, I'm not interested in having an argument about this.
No, no, I'm not either, I'm just.
In fact, I'm going to stop. We're not quick to have an argument here.
All right, that's fair enough.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Could, could staff advise us as to what sort of the categories of an EAW, EIS, are? I suspect that a lot of the things that we're probably interested in knowing more about would be kind of compiled in that view as far as environmental issues, you know, and some of the points about connectivity to other, other events, walkability, bikeability. And at this point, you know, we're doing a preliminary approval of, or being asked to approve a preliminary document so that process can begin. James, do you have an idea of the general categories that would help us think about what things we may want to ask them to look at in addition if it's not already going to be covered?
I believe, believe between the traffic study, the sewer study, the EAW, most, most of those questions about environmental impact, pedestrian access, traffic will be answered as part of those studies.
And, and that is a, that is a step that would follow an approval action here at this, at this commission, correct? So, so what we're talking about, we may, we have another chance to review it with some of the information in front of us at a later point in this approval process for, towards final platting.
That's correct. So city council can't make any final determinations. So certainly, planning commission needed to see what this plan unit development overlay district looked like, but, you know, based on recommendations tonight, this will move to the next city council meeting, but we will hold off the actual rezoning portion of it because city council cannot take action on that yet. So certainly comments can be given to city council from tonight's meeting as part of a preliminary review of it, but there will be more information to come.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions, otherwise seeking a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the rezoning from RL1 to PUD overlay, approve the preliminary plat and approve the PUD development stage plan.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion?
Well, I'll just mention too, I'll reiterate what a few have said, but it's, it's encouraging to see the investment being made addressing the, what's commonly referred to as the housing crisis that exists in Brainerd and, and I know we have the EAW outstanding and the traffic study outstanding and looking forward to seeing additional information and considering based on that.
All right. Any further comments or questions, discussion, seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
And motion carries. And moving on to the next item for, my computer went to sleep, and I recall what it is, I just don't want to say, misquote it, the conditional, the interim use permit for parcel 41241525. And Director Kramback?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Mr. Zalinski is requesting that accessory greenhouses be allowed for cannabis micro businesses in the TC district. Mr. Zalinski has been preliminary approved by the Office of Cannabis Management and preliminary approved to operate a cannabis micro business with a retail endorsement at Yesterday's Gone. In addition to the tax amendment, Mr. Zalinski will also be required to amend his IUP and request a variance for fence height. The current IUP allows for the growing of herbs in conjunction with Yesterday's Gone. The property is currently utilized as an accessory greenhouse for a licensed food establishment, as I had just indicated. As this is a new industry in Minnesota, staff is unsure if there would be a significant smell added to the neighborhood as a result of the growing operations. The applicant may be able to provide required measurements that are required by the state of Minnesota for that. The greenhouse will not generate a significant amount of traffic except for a few staff members. There have been no issues with prohibited indoor storage as part of the existing operation of the greenhouse or outdoor. Like to clarify a conversation with the applicant that the greenhouse will be strictly used for cannabis production if approved. And then, you know, if it does move elsewhere, it would potentially then go back to production of herbs for the restaurant. Regarding the variance and the practical difficulties, fences for non-residential uses are allowed to be constructed up to eight and 1/2 feet high within this district, which is appropriate for most commercial uses. OCM requires a fence height of 10 feet to operate a cannabis growing facility and thus creates a practical difficulty for the applicant. The construction of the fence will not alter the essential character of locality as the location currently operates as a commercial greenhouse with an eight-foot chain link fence. This area of the Town Center District is more industrial in nature. So with that, staff does recommend the following approvals. Approval of the tax amendment request as presented in the proposed ordinance. Approval of the interim use permit amendment contingent upon approval of the tax amendment request with the following conditions. No outdoor storage. Indoor storage shall be limited to materials incidental to the operations of the greenhouse. Cannabis products must be grown indoors. Should the establishment seize operations, the greenhouse must be removed within 60 days. The interim use permit amendment to grow cannabis if approved, the interim use permit amendment to grow cannabis approved for a period of three years upon approval by city council. And approval of the variance request is contingent upon approval of the interim use permit amendment. And I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
James, it flew past me pretty quickly, if I could just have you clarify, is the proposed greenhouse, cannabis micro business going to be in a separate greenhouse, did I hear you say, or from the restaurant or the food that's produced, foods and herbs that are produced for the restaurant, or are they going to be?
So the herbs will no longer, as indicated by the applicant, he can maybe clarify, I had a phone conversation, that if allowed by city council, they no longer be growing herbs for the restaurant. It'd be used for the cannabis micro business if, if all the approvals are met.
As the exclusive use.
As the exclusive use.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair, a question for James. So we're required to allow two micro businesses in, in town, as I understand. Is this one of them or does this count towards one of those two, or am I conflating those?
Yes, so this is, one of the two, Yesterday's Gone was approved for micro business with retail endorsements.
Okay.
Or pre-approved.
Thank, yeah, thank you.
All right. And seeing no other questions, I'll open the public hearing at 6:41 for the interim use and ask that the applicant come forward and just a name and mailing address for the record and a brief synopsis of the application.
My name is, my name is Dee Zalinski, 15965 County Road 25, Brainerd. We, we hold one of the permits to open a dispensary in Brainerd and it is our plan to take our reception room and make it a separate entity in our building and that'll be our dispensary. Then we want to grow the cannabis in the greenhouse, if that clears up any question on that. We've been doing this, working on this for six years with the state. We started out growing hemp on our property. The county threw a kink in our plan because we have a building sitting there, but they're saying we have to be in a commercial zone. So we're asking the city to allow us to use our existing greenhouse to get going.
Any, sorry, any other comments?
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And just to follow up on the same question to you, Mr. Zalinski, the use of the greenhouse in the enclosed fencing is, is going to be exclusively to support the cannabis micro business?
Cannabis micro business.
Thank you.
It'll be a separate business from Yesterday's Gone.
I beg your pardon?
It's actually a separate business from Yesterday's Gone, but in the same building. It's called Craft Woods.
But as far as the food product, the food product pieces, it's going to be separate from any of the, the food products of the restaurant?
Right, yeah.
Is that disappointing?
We're currently, currently use it to grow food for the restaurant. You can only have a greenhouse, the way it's written out is if you're on floral or a restaurant and then you have to use it for that if you don't have to take it out. We're just trying to, we're asking that you add cannabis to that list.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Yes?
Steve, do you attend to, your dispensary intends to sell only your products or will you be selling a range of products?
We, we, we have the right to buy other products, but we do not want to. We are a craft business. We want to build this on our own product.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And another call for anyone wishing to speak at the interim use public hearing. And third and final call for anybody wishing to speak at the public hearing for the interim use permit. And I'll close the public hearing at 6:44 and bring the discussion back to the commission table for comments and further questions.
Mr. Chair, I might, might clarify a finding of fact for circumstances unique to the property in that this, this use in our ordinance, the cannabis use was established prior to, if I'm correct, James, prior to the fence standards being developed. And so we have, you know, we have this disharmony between our 8 and 1/2 inch high standard and the state mandated 10 foot, which to me is another finding of fact or supports the variance criteria for a practical difficulty. That's my comment, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, otherwise looking for a motion on the item?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the tax amendment request as presented in the proposed ordinance.
All right.
Second, Duvall.
Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, just a quick question. So the only thing being proposed is the tax amendment? There weren't any, just, there's no other zoning changes, just the tax amendment, correct?
I worded it that way. I see the second recommendation is contingent upon that, so I'm assuming separate motions would be in order, but.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, but just to answer the question, that's.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for saving my tail. All right. Any further discussion or seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And that motion carries. And then looking for the next motion?
Move to approve the interim use permit amendment, subject to the following conditions, A through E.
Second, Duvall.
All right. Any further discussion? And seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And oppose, same sign. And motion carries. And next steps for the applicant?
Is there the, the variance as well?
Sorry, third. Thank you for saving my tail, James. Everybody's saving my tail tonight. And then a third and final motion. Looking for anyone willing to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, could, James, could you tell us exactly what we're voting on here of the variance, just to phrase it again, so?
Yeah, so the variance would be allowing this property to go up to a 10-foot height for the chain link fence.
And this is the item you were kind of addressing, a finding of fact?
Mr. Chair, I, I would make the move, motion to approve the variance request contingent upon the approval of the interim use permit amendment and also with the additional clarifying finding of fact regarding the, the timing of the fence standard with the OCM.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And finally, next steps for the applicant?
Yeah, so this will be heard at the next city council meeting on October 6th at 7:30 PM here in the council chambers.
All right. And then moving on to the item for 3424 Oak Street. Director Kramback?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Joel Jacobson has applied for a rezoning and future land use map amendment from contemporary neighborhood to zoning district to general commercial zoning district to allow for the construction of an office retail building on vacant property at 3424 Oak Street. The proposed action is consistent with the provisions of the comprehensive plans, economic development goal one, support infill and redevelopment throughout Brainerd as a strategic component of growth. The property is adjacent to other properties owned general commercial. The property to the west is Zone CN2. The property is located at the corner of Oak Street and Highway 25 and all other properties at this intersection are Zone General Commercial. The property was zoned commercial in the previous zoning map. The new zoning map adopted in 2022 did rezone the property to CN2. The office for Jacobson Excavating will not add significant traffic to the area. This location will not serve as their construction storage site. It will serve as a general office for business as well as an area to meet clients and show them products. The fire marshal is required to turn around on this property per state fire code and has preliminarily approved the plans. MINDOT did again offer their recommendations and guidance for this and that letter was sent to the planning commission. sent to the planning commission, potentially around about in the future at this location. The shared access will be far enough away from, from having any impact on that. The proposed project, just want to make the commission is not locked in upon approval of this request, it's just a rezoning request and not a conditional use permit, but the project would be subject to all zoning requirements of the code. Office business is a permitted use in the general commercial zoning district, so if the applicant did come forward upon a potential approval, they'd be subject to all the requirements of the zoning code. So with that, staff recommends approval of the rezoning and future land use map amendment as presented, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Yes.
James, can, can you clarify the, what access they would be looking? It looks like there's a shared access with the property to the west that you referenced, and do they have a current easement there? I think it was, I saw EAS referenced.
That's correct.
Wasn't entirely sure if there was a current easement there, and then one other question afterwards.
Yep, so that's correct. They do share an easement with that, so there'd be not an additional access on to Oak Street as a result of this project.
And then you referenced, obviously, the applicant, Jacobson Excavating. They're the applicant, but they referenced just a retail. Do we know what the use of the proposed retail business is or the nature of it?
I think it's going to serve more as an, as an office. The retail aspect is just kind of the office, retail business is kind of lumped in as the same type of use within the code.
They're using it for their own office.
For their own office, that's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Duval.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there a reason that the TN2 zoning would not work in this, in this area?
So TN2 would potentially work in this area. Certainly, there'd be different setback standards with that. Staff had recommended them to potentially go down to general commercial because then it would be next to other general commercial zoning districts, so it'd be less of a spot zone.
Mr. Chair, I guess sort of the zoning change that they're looking for, it would mostly act like a TN2 and compatible with the section. You know, we've got TN2 along a great length of Oak, just a little bit to the west. But, but there's notable exceptions. One of the uses, we just had a conversation about one of the uses here in general commercial that's not allowed in, in residential neighborhoods is the cannabis dispensaries. And we had a lot of discussion as a, a planning commission about avoiding putting cannabis dispensaries in our residential neighborhoods. We have multifamily housing unit right adjacent to this, and, and I don't, I can't think of a creative and clever way to say that we make a general commercial zoning change here and exclude cannabis dispensaries to be consistent with how we develop that standard for cannabis dispensaries. So I'm kind of thinking that it may make more sense for us to make this a TN2, which still allows the office and number of other compatible commercial uses there, but specifically that cannabis dispensary use would not be allowed on a TN2 zoning piece. And so I would like the commission to think about an alternative that doesn't carry something over and create an inconsistency on, on decisions that have been made to set up and approve other uses in general commercial. So it's one of those liability things that if we, if we make the change to general commercial, we then now have even a shared access for a cannabis dispensary, and it's not that I'm questioning what the applicant intending, but once you zone it, it can be used that way. They could rent out a part of their business office for a cannabis dispensary, you know, if, if a license became available in the city of Brainerd. So I'm trying to think ahead a little bit and, and guard ourselves from setting up something that makes us inconsistent with a lot of discussion we had around protecting our neighborhoods and keeping cannabis dispensaries in the business and not in the neighborhoods. I don't know if anyone has thoughts on how else we might be able to approach that to kind of disassemble those, tease those pieces apart so that we don't go back and create an inconsistency. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just to respond to that, potentially, well, maybe I have a question for James that might be a way to address that. Regarding the concern over potential future cannabis use at that property, we are required to, not use, but.
Thank you. There's no guarantee.
Land use. We're required to allow two dispensaries. Do we, do we have a cap on that? And is that just the two allowed?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll clarify on that. So yeah, as of right now, in our city code, we allow for two registrations. Those have currently been essentially used up unless city council makes an amendment to our city code that would allow for either more retail establishments or microbusinesses. So something else to consider, if the planning commission did recommend this would be a TN2, it'd be denying the application, recommending denying the application at that point. City council would have to deny the application, and that applicant would have to reapply at that point. So just wanted to make that as a clarification as well as not something that, that could just be changed.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, just a follow-up then on my comment in the response. Understanding that that, you know, the two that we've, licenses that we've allowed can't change, so it doesn't perfectly address your concern, but I think it, you know, with those two only being the ones that are allowed, they'll likely be pretty sought after and held onto for as long as possible. So I, I would think it would be less of a concern.
I have a good question.
Yes.
It'll be for James again. So let's say we don't, we go forward with this, and they decide six months from now, and the city of Brainerd says, yes, we're going to have 10 in here, and they want to do it on theirs. That still has to go through a process to be allowed at that location? Or are they just, if they get it, are they granted and able to open it immediately?
So cannabis in a general commercial zoning district would be a permitted use. They'd have to meet the other requirements for that. You know, we'd have to look into the growing operations, typically growing except for, you know, potentially these accessory uses for a microbusiness. Trying to think, so you have the accessory use for the microbusiness, potentially green, some greenhouse production of some smaller plants are allowed throughout the city, but actual growing facilities are typically going to be reserved to, to general commercial, especially for a large, or not general commercial, industrial, for larger operations. So microbusiness with retail endorsements is typically just going to be, you know, essentially like a liquor store, is you're not actually producing that product on that site.
Even if it's a residential neighborhood, neighbor?
That's correct.
Okay. Just clarification, I didn't know.
Any further questions?
Just a quick one. And so the property, properties to the east and the west of the highlighted property, they are general commercial already, correct?
They are general commercial, so that's where staff recommended not doing a spot zone in this area. Certainly, it's at the intersection of this area, which is, you have intersections of major roads like this, it does make sense to, to have a general commercial zoning district in staff's opinion.
And then just to follow up, so a dispensary could go on either side of this property? It's a general commercial.
So the, let's see, to the east of this apartment complex, that may still be residential.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none? Looking for a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would move that we deny the application based on the fact that, of that conflict with, with some of the potential uses of the site adjacent to a residential area. And I would encourage the applicant to come forward with a, a different zoning proposal, specifically a TN2 that would meet their needs and, and at the same time kind of preserve that residential buffer there.
All right. Motion and looking for a second? And a second time calling for a second? And hearing none? Motion dies for a lack of second and looking for?
I would move to recommend approval of the zoning and, excuse me, rezoning and the future land use map amendment as presented.
Motion by Erickson?
Second.
Second by Peterson. Any further discussion?
I would just say, Mr. Chair, I'm in favor of this because, just because it keeps, it doesn't, we move away from spot zoning. I don't, I don't like, I don't really care for spot zoning much.
All right. Yes.
I'm not sure. Do we hold a public hearing for this?
Oh.
Don't believe we did.
We did not.
Point of order.
Mr. Chair, I withdraw my motion.
All right.
It's not a public hearing.
I will.
Does that mean my motion's still alive?
No. All right.
Procedural bypass.
I am failing a lot tonight, and so I will open the public hearing at 7 o'clock for the zoning change for, where did it go? For the zoning change for the address on Oak Street. There it is. For 3424 Oak Street. For PID 41290611. And I'll call forward anyone that is willing or wanting to speak, seeing the applicant is not here. And I'm going to take a stab at it, nobody's online. And second time, call for anybody willing or wanting to speak at the public hearing for 3424 Oak Street. And a third and final time of anyone wanting to speak at the public hearing for 3424 Oak Street. And I'll close the public hearing at 7:01. And given the fact that we've had a lot of discussion already, looking for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I will not submit a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, move to recommend approval of the rezoning and future land use map amendment as presented.
I will second that.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
And the motion carries. All right. Next steps for the record.
This will be heard at the next city council meeting on October 6th, 7:30 PM in the council chambers.
All right. And not joking, but now for the heavy lifting item, because this one is the one that is a fair amount of heavy lifting.
So yeah, I'll introduce it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a review of the shoreline ordinance. Staff have coordinated with our local DNR hydrologist on the formation of a new shoreline ordinance as requested by the DNR earlier in the year. Staff are recommending that we repeal and replace the existing regulations found in city code section 530 and add new regulations to the zoning code by forming the shoreline overlay district. Staff utilized much of Crow Wing County's regulations when creating this ordinance, as the ordinance provides great detail on what property owners are allowed to do in the shore impact zone, but also protecting our water quality. This is meant to be a high-level overview tonight to make sure we're going in the right direction, essentially working a lot with that Crow Wing County code. So not looking for a lot of specific detail tonight, but is staff moving in the right direction on this? There's a few things that I detailed in here that staff still need to do. Planning development, conditional use permits, variances, some of the requirements in our, in our shoreline district need to be added to our rules and administration in the zoning code. Staff does need to tweak our uses within here as well. And then our definitions that are found in our code will have to be added to our definitions in the zoning code as well. So those are the things that I spoke with the hydrologist with, things that still need to be done, and those will be done upon review of the next code. But what staff had presented to here is kind of the bulk of what this ordinance could potentially look like. So again, just looking for some potentially high-level comments, also put a proposed schedule in here in front of the planning commission, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? I end up having a question. I don't recall seeing a table. Do we currently have a table, a use table for our shoreline overlay?
We don't in the zoning code. There's kind of a, kind of a table, I would call it, in our actual shoreline code itself, but it's not really useful. It just kind of talks in generalities, whether it's industrial or commercial. So certainly, we'd want to have a much more detailed use table that would be put into this code for our shoreline district. And that use table will be separated by potentially certain types of uses, but then also for different types of water bodies, whether it's a general development lake, a recreational development lake, or natural environmental lake. So it'll be much more detailed than what we currently have and follow more with what we should be doing, kind of as per state statute and requirements of the DNR regulations.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for? My next comment, if I may, is that after briefly going through, I am, I'm encouraged, and I do like the direction that we're heading with it. And so I, I know that this is a lot of work, and a lot of the, the work we are trying to grab bits and pieces that we can be able to mold and model along with some of our neighbors. And so it's very much a partnership situation, and appreciate all the work that's gone into it already. Any other questions, comments? And then I don't believe I saw a recommendation for a action.
No motion required for this one. Just wanted some general consensus and, and if feedback, if, if there were any, and that staff is moving in the right direction. It seems that we are moving in the right direction, and staff will continue on some of those action items that were listed in the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question for James. Just looking at the timeline that's laid out here, proposed schedule, obviously tonight for planning commission, will planning commission see this again? Oh, I'm sorry, I see it now.
Yeah, so planning commission, as, as I have drafted in the proposed schedule, will see this two more times. So I envision, you know, the packet comes out on a Friday before Wednesday review, so it's a large code. This gives planning commission a chance, you know, really about a month to kind of dig through this, if there's any details that you'd like to see changed. Certainly, we can't change everything. There are certain minimum requirements that we have to abide by per state statute and the requirements of the DNR. But there are certain things that could potentially be changed, and we can discuss those at the next meeting. So that'd be our, kind of our, more of our working session for that one, anticipating maybe not quite as, as large of a packet for next, for the next meeting. And then we'd be looking at the next meeting after that, holding the public hearing for the shoreline ordinance, and then it would be passed along to city council.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So James, the, the shoreline overlay then will just be like the PUD overlay we, we discussed earlier today. You're going to have an underlying zoning that's probably TN1s in probably a lot of that area. And then sort of the, the statewide mandatory pieces are going to be laid on top of that with the shoreline overlay.
Yep, that's correct. And then typically how it works is whatever's more restrictive.
Yep, yep. So you would, in the overlay process, we would, we would then be either tossing things out that are our preferences in other areas that aren't shoreline, or, or because they're more restrictive, we would have those in place. I think we had a variance at the last, the, the August meeting, right, about a, a storage shed being on the street side versus the lakeside, right? And that's a shoreline ordinance piece.
Exactly, yep. So they were required to get a variance from our shoreline ordinance at that time. And I do see a lot of the municipalities putting their actual shoreline ordinance into their zoning code portion. Everything's still part of the city code, but I've, I've seen a lot of shoreline overlay districts with other municipalities, so staff's recommending going that route.
I think it's a good choice. It gets us down, and it's a good chunk of paper to throw out at the back of the, so the old shoreline ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? I believe after our amended agenda, on to directory reports.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to update one thing from the last city council meeting, something that the EDA has been working on. So as the executive director of the EDA, I, along with, I know Nick did a few tours, as well as some liaisons from the EDA. We had toured some childcare facilities and recommended city council to incentivize childcare within the city of Brainerd. So city council did approve a childcare incentive policy for both in-home daycares as well as commercial childcare facilities. And that policy that was approved by city council at the last meeting would waive city billing permit fees and inspection fees for all construction projects less than $450,000, waive all zoning permit fees and zoning application fees, as well as waiving all end. as well as waiving all engineering permit fees. And that's all I have.
All right. And then on to commissioner reports. I'll start down at, to the newly reappointed.
Well, looking forward to working with everybody here on the, on the commission and topics that we deal with. So just fresh back from a Canadian trip, so I was racing down here and wife-driving while I'm looking at a packet. Thank you much. Look forward to meeting those I have not met. I'm Mike. Nice to meet you, so. Thank you.
I have nothing.
And Commissioner Horne.
Mr. Chair, I, I think I'll answer Dave's question now about where I would think 190 units would go in. I live in southwest Brainerd, and southwest Brainerd right now has a lot of multifamily housing, and it has room for a lot more. Specifically, I'm talking about southwest 6th Street, between the community college, heading north, heading north from College Drive, that what, three, four block stretch right there. I've noticed several lots that have, are on the market now. I see for sale signs that have popped up along southwest 6th, which means somebody's putting the housing, putting their property on the, on the market. That's great. I think that area, we have a lot of multifamily housing right now, a lot of density. It could take more. There's whole streets right now that are just, there's a street that runs behind the, oh, behind the apartment buildings. It was the one that they put in when they did the, it's the, it's a short east-west street. It's kind of meant to be a connector street. That's wide open. There are lots all along that. So that's what I'm thinking of. I absolutely agree with having 190 units, adding 190 units. I think we have areas that are, that are very appropriate for it, that are open, that are being served by city services already, the power and the, and the sewer, and are, would fit right in, they'd be integrated in. So that's my two cents worth. That's all.
Thank you.
There's my answer.
Commissioner Paul.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Erickson.
Welcome back, Mr. Duval. Thank you.
And I will wrap with, also, welcome back. It's good to see you again. And that being the end, looking for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All right. And thank you all.
Aye.
Aye.
I know it's a not.